This meeting is being recorded.
There you go.
What do you do with these recordings?
They, if it, if it becomes a public meeting, if you guys all have, if we have a quorum here, which does look like we do, we do end up posting recordings on the public meeting calendar as prescribed in one dash two five five, I believe is the number, but don't quote me as I'm on recording. We do also post them to the website. I don't see a ton of clicks on YouTube though, that makes you feel a lot better. So that means whoever's here is typically the ones reviewing it.
It's us several times, making sure we're getting our deliverables done.
Things will just go down soon.
All right, so it is four oh three, so I'm gonna start the meeting and we are recording. So just, so everybody's aware of that. Thank you all for being here to our second Industry Governors Workforce Council Industry Leadership Meeting. I've sent, or a, an agenda was sent out to you and then I sent out a few materials at about three o'clock, things that we'll be going over. Once we get there, if you don't have them, I will be sharing them on the screen as well. I think everybody in this room knows each other, although I don't think, hey, Jack, Jack is subbing in today. So I'm gonna do a roll call and then you can introduce yourself then, Jack, is that okay?
That's good.
All right, so council members, Marty Dwyer, are you here?
I'm here, present.
All right. So, Jack, what's your last name?
Mahoney. I'm here for Maggie Holes.
Excellent. Ed Hawthorne?
Here.
Nitin Kumar?
Yes, present.
Thank you. Kathleen, I don't see Kathleen here. Senator Heron Gaston is not here. Molly Kellogg?
Here, present.
Yep, and then Commissioner O'Keefe is not here. All right. So our first thing to do is we will approve the minutes from last meeting. Has everybody, everybody seen the minutes? They're attached to your invitation?
Yeah.
All right, so can I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the previous meeting's minutes.
Thank you.
Second.
Any abstain?
Hold on, hold on. For all in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Any nays, yeah.
Any abstain? You all voted aye, so.
All right, thank you. The meeting minutes have passed from last session. You can tell I don't do this very often. So I want to start with a quick update. From the last meeting, we talked about the strategic plan that went out for, for the Office of Workforce Strategy. The strategic plan, as well as being socialized on our website, was presented at the Jobs for the Future Horizons Conference. And will be also presented at the National Workforce Council Meeting that's coming up in Norfolk, Virginia in October. If you'd like a copy of that, just let us know and we'll send you one. We are having a regional sector partnership meeting that is coming up for statewide regional sector partnership meeting, January 12th. We'll send you all invitations to that. And last, our last meeting, we talked about the $30 million authorization for bond funding for OWAS. That bond funding has been approved and 10 million of it went through the bond meeting in August to come to, to OWAS for, for our WISE Fund, which is our workforce innovation. I don't know what the S is for Laura. Workforce Innovation.
And Sustainability.
And Sustainability Fund. We don't have the parameters around that yet, but we will have them and certainly are willing to share them out as we're putting them together for review. Are there any questions about those things? The WISE Fund? Nobody has questions about the WISE Fund? Oh.
Who, who manages the WISE Fund?
OWAS will be managing it.
Okay.
And our assumption is that it will be similarly managed as the, as like MIF or the Manufacturing Innovation Fund is being managed.
But this is a new, a new initiative based on that new plan, right?
Yep.
In, in a, in a quick summary, what's the? If things go well, what happens? What do we, what did we accomplish with that fund?
Would you like me to give it a shot Laura? Would you like to?
Whatever you would like.
Oh, you go ahead.
You know, we, we really wanted to enact a workforce innovation and sustainability fund, not, not fund with like a capital F, let's just say, but, but a pot of money to be made available for pilot or sustainable programming that could fill the gaps that don't currently get filled. So for example, we owe a funding. We understand that that can only serve, you know, very specific populations, can't fund, you know, federal no-nos, let's just say like cannabis again, just for example. It's got, it's got some, some eligibility restrictions around it. And so we really wanted to start utilizing a funding mechanism that could, that could really serve these gaps, do pilot programming if that, that, that was necessary in a particular region, or provide some sustainability and ongoing funding for things like regional sector partnerships. We did get 30 million in total authorized, but only 10 million allotted to us this first round. We were really hoping for all of it, but it didn't quite, it didn't quite happen. So, you know, the, the goal is really to, to release competitive packages whereby applicants can apply for those types of programming. And we would also have some sort of advisory board. So again, very akin to a manufacturing innovation fund, where there is an advisory board of members. OWAS is here to make sure that we're following all the procurement guidelines and that we're checking all of the right boxes for state procurement requirements. And then that executive committee would come in and, and support, you know what? We're really seeing a high need in transportation issues in this particular area. Can we do anything about this and really act as that advisory capacity? So that's, that's kind of where we're going. But more really to come as we really start to stand it up and we create bylaws and we create more procedures and procurement procedures as we go. And obviously always welcome to, to input and conversation there, but that, that's kind of where we're going. And that's the direction that we're moving in. Of course, if there's other ways to braid funding, if braided funding becomes available, that's always a great option as well.
Yeah, and if I'm not mistaken, the OWAS is funding one of our RSP initiatives in the Waterbury area, where he's setting up that program for training workers for plating, that, that's coming out of that funding, right?
So that is not coming out of that funding, that actually, and that will be part of our conversation. I was gonna share with the, that funding is actually coming from a grant with EDA, the Jobs Challenge. But that grant funding will be ending June 2026. And so, so we are looking for with the regional sector partnerships, sustainable funding to help them continue their work.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
And the WISE Fund could be an example of that, right? So, so you know, I think, I think right there, that's the plating program, right? The NIMs, the NIMs program, right? So that's a perfect example of something that the WISE Fund could potentially fund in the future, because now you've, you've created a program that is now nationally recognized. And now we want that national recognition stamp of approval on top of it. The WISE Fund could, could be a place for that, right? If the executive committee that runs it chooses that that's the direction that they, that that's where the best, that's the best use of the fund. So those types of programming are, is kind of the type of thing that that would, that would continue to support. Especially as the grant funding goes away, which is, we're about to, we're about to lose all 90, 90 million is all been just about dispersed coming up here in, in June of 2026.
Are there any other questions? Before I move on? All right, thank you Laura, I appreciate the, the update. All right, so there were a few things and I'm gonna, I'll, I'll share a PowerPoint. But there, there are a few things that we had on our to-do list from the last meeting and we'll go over those first before we talk about, I'll give a brief, there's a few slides, a brief update for where the regional sector partnerships are and, and our hopes for them in the future. So let me, can I share?
You should be able to, it says your host.
You should, you should have the power, yeah.
Yep, okay. All right, so. Can everybody see the screen? Oh. Which screen do you see?
It's not, it's in presenter mode. We can see all the slides on the left.
Oh. Well, no surprises. All right. Um, now can you see the presentation? Still no.
Try hitting from beginning again.
Okay. I'm gonna stop the share and do.
I could be logging.
It's showing up on another screen I have, that's why, so let me.
Yeah, just pick that screen.
All right, here we go.
I'm good.
All right. There we go. So in our last, in our last meeting, we had a few action items. One of them was to, for OWAS to draft a formal message, which I did send in an email and I'm not sure if Jack actually has it. But I did send it an email out and Maggie would have it, so Jack will see if we can get you a copy of it. But basically it's a, it's a shortened email so that you all can send it out to your business and industry partners. Really what we're trying to do is promote from an industry level, the regional sector partnerships and where we are. We are like, it's five years of the, of the work now that, around the regional sector partnerships and we are coming up on a, how are we gonna evaluate these and how are we gonna increase industry membership? Specifically for me and overseeing the regional sector partnerships, it's really been interesting, and I want to say not a struggle is not the right word, but we're trying to make sure that industry really is the top voice or is the primary voice that are coming out of these regional sector partnerships. They're being co-convened by people, by organizations that normally co-convene these types of organizations. And so they're used to taking on the work and the leadership of them. And so we're trying to really build a different, a different venue for the industry partners to be able to come forward and say, you know, the ownership, this is my meeting, this is my organization, this is what we're trying to do. I will. Take a look at the. Well, we'll get to that in a second. Let me get to the draft. Here we go. So the draft. Please take a look at this back at here, we, let's talk about it today. But please take a look at it back at your, in your offices. If you have any changes to it, please send them to me and say, hey, I think this should really say this or this would better resonate, or quite frankly, you can rewrite it, I'm fine with that too. Just, this was just to really get us started. I will say that the Architecture, Engineering and Construction Group just, just got together statewide, that RSP, or and I say statewide partnership. And there was a letter written by an industry partner that went out and that really inspired the industry leaders to show up at the meeting. And I used wording that came from that letter because it was so well-written. Thank you Beth Dupont. But really, just a, a quick email that says, you know, here's what we're doing. So if you guys want to take a few minutes to just take a look at it, let me know if you, what you think and if there's any outwardly, hey, this is, you need to change this or this would be better.
I see. Hi, this is Nitin. From our last conversation, I think we were trying to drive a specific objective. Isn't this, you know, very cryptic if somebody tries to read it on what exactly are we trying to ask from leaders? If I read this email, you know, it just says, this initiative is about business leaders setting the agenda, focusing on the priorities that matter most today and driving tangible results. What is our ask?
Really engagement. It's, it's, our ask is engagement to, in participation to these regional sector partnerships. Because we need them to be industry-led. That, that, that is the ask.
And is it fair to assume that everyone understands what's a regional sector partnership and they are aware of it?
No. Like that, that's a, that's a very good point. We don't, we know that people don't know what they are yet. I do have as my next slide, like a flyer that we can also put together, like a one pager that says this is what it is. And certainly that can also be socialized. But do you, do you think, like, is there a better way to, and I know that in an email, you're only gonna.
I think a little bit more specificity on what are we trying to ask would help because it sounds like, you know, we are asking them to do what they're doing right now because we're saying that these, that Connecticut business leaders have come together to identify opportunities and actions that drive sector growth. These have led to that, that these have tackled pressing issues, including workforce development, talent pipelines and the barriers that hold our industries back. Now it's time to take the lead.
Excellent.
Yeah, so I, I think I find it difficult to. I don't know, any other feedbacks?
No, I, I agree. I think it needs more of a hook, just asking people to, we're gonna be asking, you know, business leaders who are already busy, if we're just saying get engaged, if I got this, I'd be like, okay, wait till they, wait till it's a date or a time or something very actionable that I need to do. And I think the point about reintroducing the RSPs is also a great idea because if you're involved in one five years ago, and maybe you remember, and then if you haven't been. And, and I think it's a compelling story to tell, so maybe it's, I don't know what the actual ask would be, but when is the next meeting of the RSP? Let's get it in there, let's say, can you sit on that?
I think the, I think the ask is we want them to participate, we want the organizations to, to participate. We need to tell them, I think Nitin makes a really good point, we need to tell them what they're, what we want them to do be really prescriptive, right? We're looking for you to engage in this program that's in place, we're trying to get as many employers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if we could Marty, right? One or two examples of success, like you know Molly said, if given this is working well or has success in the past, one or two examples, even if it's in a brochure or in the email, one example or two, I think that'll make it really. You know.
Punchy.
Yeah.
So you think it's okay that it's, it, like I was trying to make it brief? You think it's okay that it has more?
I, I would go to the extent Tracy, if it's all right, we can just start by saying, you know, that, you know, the regional sector partnership at Connecticut State is doing well. We request your participation to do ABC and in the next, you know, series of meetings and then given one, one or two examples of enterprises and what they've been able to achieve through participation. And looking forward to, you know, your joining in the next one. I think if it's very straight, there, the chances for us to get some response are higher than people trying to figure out on what exactly am I expected to do here?
Okay. All right, so I'll take another crack at it and, and I'll send it out and you all can.
Yeah.
Yep. Make edits, I appreciate that. Um. All right, so our next.
And maybe the, you know, as we were talking, the attachment could be describing what is regional sector partnership.
Okay, and add in the, add the attachment.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz I don't know how you guys, how the different companies work, but you know, increasingly we're not allowed to click through into links, there's just all these cybersecurity issues. So you know, that's just a consideration as we send this out. What's the medium that's gonna be most accessible?
And that would be adding, absolutely adding an attachment, right?
I think, yeah, I mean, this, you can scan that one, but.
Okay.
And, and just provide a URL so that they can go type it into their browser.
That's a good idea.
Rather than like industry leadership be a hyperlink, you can, you can have it be a hyperlink, but also add the URL. So someone can go type it in.
Yeah, because right now this email wouldn't even, would not get through as it is from, in the state emails.
Yeah.
So, okay. All right, so once we have this, and I'll send this out, like I said, I'll send this out. But the, in order for us to keep track here of who it has been sent out to, if you don't mind, including the OWAS dot hello email on it, we'll ask you to do that so that Dominique and I can keep track of who it's being sent out to. And we'll, you know, we'll be able to report back to that. Here's, here's a list and so that other, that you all know who you are all each reaching out to.
And when we click on this industry leadership hyperlink or where, where does it really take us?
It takes you, it takes you to the new website for OWAS, to the industry leadership page for that. And then that page brings you to the, all the RSP info.
Okay.
Right Laura?
I think so. I think that's all working now. Let us know, the website only went live about a month ago, so.
Yes, in all fairness.
You wanna give us. But I do think, I think to Tracy's point, I do think that that immediately does link you to all the various regional sector partnerships around the state so that you can immediately be connected to the appropriate one in your region, which really is the call to action.
Absolutely. Sorry for putting you on the spot there Laura.
No problem.
Um, I'm gonna quick share with you all the, the draft of the, the attachment that we'll share. This also is up for discussion, so. Let me see. I think I'd be better at this. All right, so here's the. It's, it's just a one pager. Again, this is a draft, so if you guys, you know, take a look at it and go, this should be, should say this instead. But it's join us in shaping the future, engage with your local RSP today. Connecticut business leaders, now is the time to take a lead. I might, I, this came from, directly from our email, but I'll probably take off hold ourselves and our partners accountable cuz it sounds aggressive. To me. But, but other, you know, you know, top priorities in early wins, your voice matters and how to get in, and how to get involved. And if they can't get to the link or it doesn't allow them to do the link, I did put my own email address on it.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, this is similar to the, to the letter and can we hear? If it's the attachment, say, what's an RSP and why does it matter to the future of your business? So that's very succinct and clear. And I think the, you know, the call to action is in that letter. You know, if we can elaborate on the why and when is the next meeting? Or if you have one or two points that say this is the wins that we've gotten out of the RSPs, okay. If you're, if you're, you know, show up at the next meeting and be again, more specific if we can. I'll give you my, my real bias, my, in my own marketing, I never let us use stock photos. And because I don't, that doesn't, there's no emotion there and so can we show a picture of an RSP at work or someone in manufacturing to me that looks like, you know, something.
I'm sure Kathy Awad would be happy to share some pictures.
Oh yeah, Kathy will have stuff, yeah.
Absolutely. All right, okay, so back to. So although, let's see, I'm gonna share back, this is the, I want to make sure we just get through the rest of our action items from last time, there's only one more slide of that, so. All right, so action items. The work on the draft correspondence, we got that. And the flyer, so action items number two are, are good. And then the next thing will be, once this is out and it's back to us and you all are, are good with it, then it's, you know, how are we gonna socialize it and how are we gonna keep track of that? And so we'll send out a form in order to talk about what the best way is that for you guys cuz I'm not looking to cause any additional work, but we definitely want to keep track of, of our engagement. We did last time talk a little bit about the business round, the business roundtable and engaging them. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can bring you or you and Kelly in to present, get you on the agenda.
Okay. And how often, how often are they meeting in Connecticut?
Well, the delegates meet weekly or every other week, the CEOs meet twice a year. We just had a CEO meeting in July, but the delegates are the ones to do the work, the proxies, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
CEOs will support this, I mean, anybody who's, CEOs will support a really well-functioning talent ecosystem. So this is not a controversial strategy, but the challenge is everyone's got competing priorities with the day job. This is something new and if somebody moves, like you have a person from Travelers on the RSP.
Yep.
What that means is you have a person from Travelers on the RSP. If that person wins the lottery, then there's nobody from Travelers involved. So we've gotta get some backup and some understanding, get a little deeper in the organization, so to say. All the CEOs in the state support this.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, and I say that, that's, that's been really true, more so like the, I feel like the manufacturing RSPs, they've been in some way or form around for quite some time. So they're, they're, they've been a little bit more stable in that regard, but the newer ones, that's exactly the case. So I said like, like the architecture one, like Beth Dupont is on fire, like she is running that, no, with, like nobody's business. But if she ends up moving on to someplace else, it will mean re-establishing that.
Right.
All right. All right, good to know. All right, so this is where we are with the regional sector partnerships. We do now have the architecture, construction, engineering and logistics and transportation. Not all of these, to Molly's point, not all of these are being funded by the EDA funding to help support their development and for training. There's, you know, I think three or four now that are, are running on their own and, and being run by organizations like Metro Hartford Alliance or a workforce board. We, we currently have almost 1,000 RSP partners and when we say partners, we mean industry partners. So there is engagement, like you can see here too, the manufacturing, there's 507, you know, companies that are engaged in the regional sector partnerships. Transportation, there's only 25, you know, so we, there is some building to be done. We actually recently shared this with the offices of the governor as well, this update. Which is, you know, which is where, you know, like the office, like our partnership oversight, what, what OWAS is responsible for. And we are creating shared governance. The intention is really to make this where OWAS helps the new RSPs and, and RSPs that are in place now to continue to develop and if they struggle to help them keep moving forward. But having a way for them to register themselves here in the state so that we have accurate ways to be able to support them. And then to continue with the industry engagement and introduction to partnerships, which is part of the role, what we're doing here is to make sure that there's more introductions. We are do, we are engaging in surveys with industry partners, specifically right now, it's around legislative priorities. We sent out a survey to all the RSPs asking, and for those of you in an RSP, I would like, you know, do we have anybody that's like Molly? Are you participating in Kathy's and the ones in the Northwest corner?
Yes.
Did you get an email asking you if you had legislative priorities?
Maybe.
No pressure.
Yeah, I, I, if I've seen it, I'm catching up a little bit, so.
All right, no worries. I mean, so, cuz really what we're trying to do is make sure that the industry is aware that OWAS is trying to pull together, what, you know, what are, is there anything legislative going on, like in, in manufacturing, you know, there's been a lot of talk around tax credits. So we know that's a legislative priority. Our healthcare RSPs have come together, they have a list of, you know, five or six talking points of legislative priorities. We, we at OWAS will be responsible for bringing those together and bringing them to the governor's office and say, this is what our, our industry partners are saying legislatively are important to them right now. And we'll help match those corresponding, corresponding bills. But we're also helping the RSPs engage with their legislators. So, because certainly we can bring it to the governor's office. Certainly, we can bring it to the governor's office, but the legislators are the ones that are going to fight for it on the floor. And so, you know, we're like, how do you engage legislators? So again, healthcare, they're they're doing a legislative tour right now. Because we know that this short session is coming in. In February and this is the. This, you know, the five or six things that didn't pass the last session, they're hoping to, you know, make continue to have visible until they pass. Are there any questions or thoughts about that? All right, so we also, we're doing monthly R S P meetings. Those are those are happening at the R S P level. We're do we here at O W S run quarterly ones for sectors, so statewide for the sector. We're working on the professional development sessions that will come out of O W S shortly, so technical assistance. And and then our annual convening, which we already talked about. See what else is on here. The R S P governance. So. I've added some responsibilities here. I put in the registration form. I will share this with you if you have time to take a look at the registration form and let me know what you think. I will, full disclosure, I I am advised by and borrow. Stuff from Colorado because they've been doing it now for a couple of decades around regional sector partnerships. So, you know, we have this, basically, it's a registration form, but it's called an acknowledgement form, so they don't feel like they're registering. But it lets us know where they are in their process of building their R S P. We're gonna do an R S P coordination council. I probably find a better name for that, but basically a council that includes. Relevant state agencies, but also representatives from each of the R S Ps. Maybe in conjunction with the Y's fund, if there's some. Coordination around that, but this is from a statewide, trying to get our hands around, making sure that. Industry needs aren't falling through the through the gaps. Then. Here's the R S P sector industry councils, which are quarterly that I talked about, and then, of course, the sector meetings that are happening already. There's more to come. If you guys, if you're if you're if you read this and you find that you have. A document you want to share on shared governance that you're already doing, or or that, you know, your company is, you know, working through and it and it works. Or have suggestions, we are open. All right. So here's the new website. Thank you, Laura. Here's the new website for the Office of Workforce Strategy. The regional sector partnership stuff is up. That that website will continue to grow. It's only literally a month old. I've included some strengths and and opportunities here. You know, we we shared the labor market data last time. We are having the statewide action teams. We are working with the R S Ps. But our opportunities really are really having an effective governance structure. We want to make sure that the conveners are are allowing for the industry voice to come through. And really that engaging more businesses and deeper employer support is our key. So funding for partnerships. Here's all the things that are happening here in the partnerships themselves. So Good Jobs Challenge, and I wanted to just share the slide with you so you have it. This is a twenty four million dollars, but it's a training grant. So training and placement grant. This from the inception and thank you to our our program manager, Michelle Furman. She has really been instrumental in moving this forward. But we have gone from. Literally, we had, you know, October twenty twenty three to March twenty twenty five, two hundred and seventy five new trainings and one hundred and sixty new program completions. This is moving in the direction. Our goal is two thousand. Trainings by the end of the grant, which is June twenty twenty six. We're working on it, so. Let's see, and I in the next few slides, I'm gonna let I'll let you review them on your own. But they're all like they're snippets of pieces of each of the R S Ps themselves. Their partnerships, their websites, if you want to take a look at them. Each one of them has their own. Description here, so you can just take a look. Oh, healthcare, healthcare, healthcare. Here's the four, manufacturing. Same thing, and it includes all of them. Technology, technology and transportation and distribution. I will, let me stop. Did it stop sharing?
It did.
It did, okay. I will share the the PowerPoint with you, so if you want to take a look at each of the. Or any of the R S Ps and their websites and have questions or comments, please let me know. But I wanted to make sure you all had the information around what those partnerships were doing. So that is what I have for today, Marty.
I I I think, well, nice job, Tracy. It's not an easy job. It's.
Thank you.
Hard enough getting something done in our own organizations, let alone everyone else's also. But we appreciate your diligence around it. I think the call to action here from everyone is how do we get more organizations to participate? That's our focus, really, just to get, you know, everyone under the underneath the tent, so. I think you've got some action items on cleaning up the letter a bit. I'm more than happy to look at it after. And make sure it it hits some of the feedback that. Nathan and others had had provided. So it's good. It's good to get together. I don't. Like summer meetings, but this won't listen well.
Anybody else have questions or comments or thoughts?
And one thing I'd like to flag, as you all know, I'm the president of the Connecticut A F L C O, so I represent like some of your workers. I would love for a way to engage my people to be in, especially on the training programs. I know our Connecticut State Building Trades have an unbelievable program. Our manufacturing leaders, so Marty, that's you guys are now meeting. To try to work with our national organization has this thing called Working for America. We're trying to figure out a way to, you know, try to train people to fill these holes. Because if we can get people trained up in the right way, we help the businesses succeed, which helps the businesses stay here. Which keeps our jobs in Connecticut and it helps everyone. So I'm always the out duck at these meetings. There's four of us at the governor's.
We didn't want to say that. We didn't want to say that.
Hey, I know I know you always look at Ed as the spy, but you know, we want to help. And if you guys succeed and it can be a win win for everybody, I mean, we would love to, you know, participate in any way that I know it's business based. I get that, but if there's a spot for us to come in and be helpful, especially with the training programs, please reach out. Let us know where our spot is. I want to be as helpful as possible.
Do you mind sharing the Working for America? I assume there's a website or.
Absolutely.
Please do.
Hold up. Working for America, let me get that. It's in its infancy right now, but it's something that we're looking at, especially with the manufacturing pipeline. And and the need for advanced manufacturing and the amount of advanced manufacturing that is unionized in the state of Connecticut, you know, I mean. We want. Workers to succeed and we don't want to see the high turnover rate that there sometimes is in those facilities, so. You know, they do it throughout the country. They're trying to figure out a way that makes sense to bring it here into Connecticut. But, you know, like I said, it's initial conversations with my locals and regional leaders. With that organization.
Thank you. Excellent, yeah. Have you been engaged at all with the M I B or marine industrial base work that's been going on in the state?
Yeah, and I'll follow up with you, because part of my day job is to grow the trades. Construction, welding, plumbing, carpentry in North America and in Europe, so I. I meet with the U A, the pipe fitters, the mill, the mill rights, the carpenters, yeah, so.
We have our Building Trades Training Institute that is part of all of this, and they do a phenomenal job. I mean. The outreach they do to the underprivileged populations, I mean, they take people out of prison and give them a second chance.
This is all part of N A T U?
Well, N A T U is part of it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll get together.
That's the national organization, N A T U, yeah.
Yeah, good. Kathy, do you want to say something?
I was just gonna say, if I can be of any help with the healthcare organizations, you know, we don't have to take everyone's time up here. Maybe we could have a sidebar conversation. If I can help in any way, please let me know and, you know, I'll be happy to do that.
All right, Kathy, because we have been working with the Connecticut Healthcare Council. And they're really the ones that have been organizing the work for the legislative priorities. Absolutely, I'll happily, I can make a separate time for us to chat about what's been going on.
And that may be working for you and you may not need anything else, but if if you do, I'm happy to talk to you and see if I can help in any way.
All right, absolutely. I'll follow you. I'll follow up.
Thanks.
You've been doing some great work.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, we're thrilled to have them jumping in and doing that.
Good.
Anyone else? Well, I do thank you for your time today. I know it's a summer meeting, so I'm I'm I'll give you back your fifteen minutes at the end of the day. Maybe Marty, you can go to the beach.
This is the end of the day, trust me. Nice meeting, nice meeting, and let's, you know, I know it's hard in the next couple of weeks, but we'll hit it hard after Labor Day. Ed, I'm gonna reach out to you, too.
I appreciate that. So I guess I formally have to end this, end the meeting. Right, Laura? It's a.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.